All right. Good evening and welcome to the City of South Pasadena Public Works Commission Regular Meeting on this Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six thirty P M in the City Council Chambers. We begin with the South Pasadena Commission Statement of Civility. As your appointed governing board, we will treat each other, members of the public and city employees with patience, civility and courtesy. As a model of the same behavior, we wish to reflect in South Pasadena for the conduct of all city business and community participation. The decisions made today will be for the benefit of the South Pasadena community and not for personal gain. Quick note on public participation and accessibility. Public participation may be made as follows: in person here in the chambers, via Zoom with the webinar I D given, via written public comment in email and via phone with the meeting info given on the sheet. And we move on to roll call.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, Vice Chair Ryan Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Omari Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner David Malley.
Present.
Our City Council liaison Mayor Evelyn is not here at this moment and excused absent for tonight's meeting. Commissioner Sam Hernandez, we have a quorum. Thank you. Commissioner Charles Trevino.
Yeah, present.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. We can move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Please rise the Pledge of Allegiance. I have the Vikings, the flag, I say America, in the Republic, which it stands, one nation. And then this one, justice for all.
Right. Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public comments for tonight's meeting.
Right, then we can move on to action discussion item number two. The discussion and recommendation to proceed with obtaining a preliminary design for the West Side Reservoir Replacement.
Evening.
Evening.
How are you? Got the red button?
Testing. Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Reyna, you just get the presentation.
Okay, good evening, Council Public Works Commission, Commission. Tonight's agenda is to discuss the recommendation to obtain a preliminary design report for the West Side Reservoir Replacement Project. This was discussed last year briefly after we received a report from A K D Consulting that prepared a seismic and structural analysis report for the reservoir. The reservoir is a two million gallon reservoir built in nineteen sixty-three located off of Glen Place. And A K D Consulting was contracted to do the seismic and structural analysis that we received back. We're here to share some of that information, or not some, all of that information with you. Some of it may be a repeat from last year's agenda or presentation, but it's, I'd like to share. I'd like to set the background and then proceed with the recommendation. So the report takes into consideration both visual condition and structural condition. And the report also recommends a complete replacement of the existing reservoir with a new reservoir of similar capacity at the same location. Next slide, please, Reyna. So for the visual conditions, a rating system was developed, one through four. One being very good, it's been maintained and performance and reliability can be expected for ten plus years from the various components that the reservoir is built with. And four being poor performance and reliability is not has significantly decreased and failure is possible within five years if not addressed. And on the table on the left, we could see all the different components of the reservoir. Roof exterior, roof interior, interior walls, exterior walls, the columns, floor slabs, et cetera. Most of these fall into a rating between four and three. Putting the overall condition of the reservoir in four to fair condition. Next slide, please. These are just two of the images that we pulled from the report to show some of the visual conditions that were assessed. On the left is a photo of the roof of the reservoir. You could see a noticeable deflection in the roof, which causes water to stand still on top of the reservoir. Causing this pounding effect. This, this is all around the entire circumference of the reservoir. And on the right, the image shows a concrete crack, cracking, spalling. This is on the exterior wall right below the roof of the reservoir, I believe. Next slide, please. Structurally, the reservoir again was built in nineteen sixty-three, so it does not meet any of the current design requirements. For code, it was actually constructed before the American Concrete Institute had published its first edition of the Design of Pre-stressed Circular Concrete Structures. And the American Water Works Association had not published or had not approved their standards of their tendon pre-stressed concrete tanks. So it doesn't meet current codes, to say the least. And to put that into perspective, the roof deflection that we were seeing in the picture previously was measured to be five and a half inches. And per current standards and current codes allowable deflection is about one point eight inches. So we're significantly out of specification. Also, some noticeable damage is a concrete cracking on top of where the columns sit on the roof deck. This is caused by what we call punching failure, which is when force from a column that's upholding the roof exceeds the allowable strength that the, you know, pre-stressed concrete or the reinforced concrete allows. Next slide, please. The reservoir walls were constructed with internal pre-stress, post-tension walls that are inadequate by today's standards to sustain an anticipated design earthquake load. You know, when they do seismic analysis on these structures, they have a design earthquake load that they base all their calculations off of. And when that designer's quick load was applied to the structure inside the structure, the water has a slosh wave that would be created. And the maximum slosh wave was approximated to be six point seven feet, which if that slosh wave had hit the roof of the reservoir, it could cause failure of that roof. After we received this report, we actually lowered the capacity of the reservoir just to keep it so that in, in the event of an earthquake, we wouldn't have that maximum sloshing effect. But as of right now, the capacity of the reservoir is affected. We don't keep it at full capacity. And the report summarized all these visual and structural conditions to reach the conclusion that in order to remedy these deficiencies with rehabilitation, the cost would be similar to that of the cost of replacing the entire reservoir. So that is why the recommendation is to completely reconstruct the reservoir with today's standards. Next slide, please. Did we, oh no. Like I said, the recommendation is for a new reservoir to be constructed at the same site, similar capacity, similar diameter. It'll also take into consideration that it's in a residential area, so it'll maintain the same low profile concrete column supported roof deck that it has now, but with reinforcing concrete or pre-stress or post-tension reinforcement inside of it to meet current standards and be reliable in an event of a, you know, seismic activity. Next slide, please, Reyna. Current cost estimates for reconstruction of the reservoir including contingency and engineering design and engineering related services approximately cost six point three million dollars. This is not including the pump station or any ancillary work on site that could take place with this project such as solar panels, backup batteries, improving the security of the site, lighting, et cetera. But as of right now with the, with a preliminary cost estimate, we're expecting six point three million dollars. This is just to reconstruct the reservoir. Demo the existing while keeping water services active in that community and rebuilding a reservoir of similar size and capacity, capacity in its place. Next slide, please. So tonight I'm here to ask and recommend that the city prepare a preliminary design report for the new reservoir. The preliminary design report will encompass items such as site considerations. You know, when we excavate, where do we stockpile all the material for the backfill? Where do we lay out materials that are needed for construction? Evaluate whether pre-stressed concrete or reinforced concrete is a more cost effective means of reconstructing the reservoir. And then evaluate alternative methods of delivering the project, design build or design bid build. And the preliminary design report will serve as a roadmap to get us to into construction and completion of the project. And it's estimated to cost approximately five hundred thousand dollars. Now, that could be that is budgeted in the C I P. But for a project of this size, having the preliminary design report done really would help, you know, with exploring alternatives, finding cost savings, avoiding issues come construction. But other than that, I mean, if there's any other questions, I can answer them. Yes.
The preliminary, preliminary design report. Has it been brought to bid? Is this five hundred thousand a estimate or is that what, what the cost would be? And this, if I'm understanding correctly, this is just a report, a study, correct? It has nothing to do with any type of work on the site?
Right, no, no work on the site. It's a design, preliminary design report. So they would be, like I said, evaluating different methods of the construction, identifying issues.
Would it include any designs?
Very preliminary designs. It wouldn't be designs that would be ready for construction, but I'm sure there would be some renderings prepared, site plans, things of that nature.
Five hundred sounds like that's, that's like, I think I'm trying to get. So hopefully there will be some competitive bids.
Right.
Try to determine if we can get that down. If it's just preliminary advice, according, which I totally support and all that, but that number does stick out.
Right.
And I think if that preliminary design report is going to encompass, I think the big thing when we went up there is how do we not disturb the residents the best? It's gonna disturb the residents, I guess, but what's the best way to prevent that? I think that would be a good thing to focus on as well. That's gonna be a great topic, but it seems like it's definitely.
Right, absolutely. Doing the research beforehand to figure out what's the best way to demo, which portions, keep water services active in the neighborhood.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you.
Could you push in on the collateral stuff that you mentioned about the five point three, six million three hundred thousand?
Yes.
Any idea what the collateral cost might?
Estimates are approximately nine million. This is not, this is a very large project, that one that will be perhaps the largest project of the city. But approximately fifteen million dollars will be the full, fifteen million will be the full cost of the project. Approximately nine million dollars after the, other than the reservoir reconstruction. The pump station piping, lighting in the facility, securing the facility.
Good evening, Commissioners, Antonas, right, Deputy Public Works Director. As you recall, the initial thought was to look at the reservoir because that was the one that was failing. But what the P D R would give you is an optional, you look at the pump station, you look at the site. In addition to it, it's a very unique site where you have to keep the operations ongoing while you construct. Because you can't just decide that the hillside is not going to have water. So all these considerations will be looked into the P D R. There'll be some civil drawing, soil testing to determine what's the best way to put, you know, a new reservoir and a pump station at the site.
So, yeah. If I may, the, the reservoir will still be functioning as, as this thing goes on?
As we, we have to phase it out similar, you know, because you have to, there's a lot of work. I mean, are you gonna start with the reservoir? Are you gonna bring a temporary standpipe? Where do you put it relative to the site? To keep it going so that when you do take the reservoir out or to construct it, you want to have the pumping operations going to minimize that downtime. It's very critical because it's, we can't just shut it off for two years depending on what the timeframe is going to be. So.
So follow up question.
Sure.
We approve, we initiate the P D R report, what's the timing on that? And then after that P D R report, what's the time of starting up construction?
This, we'll, we'll go to, with your blessing, we'll take it to council to seek the approval to proceed with the P R, P D R. Then that will bring the different option of how to, is it gonna be a concrete tank? Is it gonna be a steel tank based on the soil condition that's been analyzed? What is that cost and preliminary that design would be? Then we'll go that route to design it and then build it.
Okay, so this is all preliminary.
Correct.
The, the chances of the construction probably will be not till maybe another three years from now, would you say?
Two years at the most, yeah.
So the P D R report, if it gets authorized, could take one to two months?
It should, a little bit more because the civil drawings need to be looked into. They've already done the soil boring at the side. And look at all other options to construct a reservoir and a pump station. Site improvement to meet all these standards moving forward. Yeah.
So hopefully maybe before City Council approval, we can get a couple of estimates just to verify that five hundred thousand, unless that's already been done.
It's for the work for the P D R itself or?
Yeah, just the, the cost for the P D R.
We'll get the actual cost, yeah. I mean, there's gonna be an actual cost. It's an estimation for the efforts. Which we budgeted and, you know, and got it approved knowing this needs to be. If you're gonna spend sixteen million or whatever it is to build, it's always, you know, important to research it first. So when you do design and go that route, you want to get a good product that will last a long time.
No, no, and I totally support getting it. I'm just saying the cost because I'm assuming that report, it's not gonna include the designs and all the other stuff, which I would assume probably another five hundred thousand, so. Just, that's all.
I can, we need to be looking at, is that cost, can that cost be brought down any, any?
Yeah, if, as long as there's competitive bidding.
Competitive, yeah.
Then, then, you know, I totally support, but that five hundred thousand please stick it out.
That's, absolutely.
You know, can you speak towards what percentage of the city's water is supplied by this reservoir? And then also what other like project alternatives were considered?
So this pump station and reservoir primarily serves the Billiki, the pressure zone. That means all the homes up in the hills. We had a ray all the way down to Monterey on the western portion of the city. So it holds two million gallon for daily operations to ensure water in that zone is available. Although our source comes from Wilson, from groundwater and from men as needed. That is a very intricate location where in the twenty eleven, in windstorms, you know, we had power outages. So we had to get generators to make sure you could, you lose pressure in that hillside quick. So it's very intricate zone. Harriman, all that area is provided by this particular.
Okay, so it's providing it's dividing the pressure for that area basically like through the standing, like standing gravity of this, of this pump, of the station, or is it pumped?
So, yeah, at the side, you have a two million gallon reservoir that holds the water that comes in from all the zones. The pump station pumps it into the elevated tank, the Billiki tank found on La Portada. But that only holds a hundred and fifty thousand gallons, so it's not adequate. That's just for pressure. So imagine it fluctuates on a daily basis, yeah.
So I guess, I guess that's kind of what I'm considering, what I'm wondering about is that like and this is what I'm, why I'm curious about what project alternatives were considered. If, if it's a matter of like having a piece of critical infrastructure that in the event of it failing, there is no other alternative. And we're looking at spending a significant of, one of the largest capital improvement projects that we, that we debate of in repairing this one specific thing. We're ultimately perpetuating the idea of that thing being super critical and having to be on the hook for whatever cost in perpetuity. If we look at it in the sense of like, this is what it can do functionally. And these are other functional alternatives, like maybe there's a, a smaller pump that we can upsize. So then that way that is no longer that weakest link in our water delivery methodology for the hillside. Then that would potentially mean that this project would be a lot less critical and not necessarily something that we have to do, you know, right away. And so I would like to have, at least within the presentation, some form of like of being able to conceptually wrap my head around what other alternatives were considered before we decide that this is the most cost effective and practical means of, of this bet.
I mean, Ted is on the call. He would like to, he can chime in on it as well. But yeah, again, that's what the P D R would give you. And this is the last large construction as far as infrastructure for water. I mean, we rebuilt Garfield.
Right.
Wilson, Graves, Grand, and this is the last larger storage. So absolutely, those are considerations that the P D R will let you, instead of just spending the money.
Got you.
You want to make sure that these pipes are cast iron.
Yep.
Put in in nineteen sixty-three and it's just a matter of when.
Right.
Not if, yeah.
Exactly. So like if we're not like, I'm, my thinking is that if we're not like increasing like interconnections, trunk lines to like additional utilities, finding ways of bringing water from our sources. I think in the long term, we might not necessarily, we could, we could build this great pump station. But again, like you said, if we have a bunch of old pipes sitting everywhere, we won't really have the means to have operational flexibility with the efforts constructed anywhere. So.
Right, no, it's.
So, okay.
I have Ted Gerber, our director. You can go ahead and speak, Ted.
Thanks, Reyna, and, and thank you, Michael Antonas. Thanks for the presentation. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm sorry I couldn't be with you in person tonight. I just wanted to add a couple thoughts to extend what Michael and Antonas are presenting tonight. So fully understand the concern for, you know, a half a million dollar project that sounds like it's a piece of paper that's a report. You know, adding to what Michael said, this effort brings us into the design phase. So this isn't work that we wouldn't otherwise do in design. If we were to hire a designer right off the bat, they would have to do this work as part of the design. However, we'd be committed to doing the full design through that work without having this preliminary step to understand some really fundamental things about the site before moving forward. So it's, it's not as if we wouldn't be spending a significant amount in the design process and we're spending more to do this step. This step is a part of the design process. I also want to put the five hundred thousand dollars in perspective. The, the seismic evaluation that we did, the seismic and structural evaluation was about a hundred thousand dollars. And that was looking at one aspect of the reservoir. What was the condition of it? We did some site work there to inspect and survey it and then do an analysis of, you know, what's the status of it and how would it respond during an earthquake? So when we're considering this pretty complicated site that has residences around it, there's a pump station, there's roadways, there's yard piping, there's there's a hydraulic and hydrology issues with the site. Five hundred thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money, but with the amount of engineering analysis and like Michael said, this could be the most complicated project the city has taken on possibly ever. You know, we don't know the full history, but it's a very complicated process. And so when we're talking about this sum of money and again, in relation to what we estimate to be a fifteen, sixteen million dollar project, it's really important that we take this first step of a step that we would have to take anyway, but we want to take it as a, as an isolated step so we can get, you know, literally our footing on this project. One more comment, there was an issue raised about competitive bidding. We actually do not intend to competitively, competitively bid this preliminary design report. This is such a specialty area of work that we are going to recommend to the council and we're looking for your advisement on this to continue with the team that we already have in place doing the seismic and structural work. Now, competitive bids make sense in many applications. For example, when we are doing this design work and this evaluation, we're going to learn so much about this site that when we competitively bid the construction project, we will be in a lot better position to avoid unknowns and changers in the future. So a competitive bid process to build the project, certainly, we could send, we could save millions of dollars with a competitive bid construction project. Competitively bidding this preliminary step, we may, we don't necessarily want to do that. We may want to competitively bid the full design, but we need our expert team that's familiar with the, with the site and with the seismic and structural evaluation to help us with this preliminary design. And so the city doesn't require us to preliminary, to competitively bid professional services and studies and evaluations like this. And, and there's a reason for that, and, and that's why we would like to move forward with the team that, that is currently working on this. Now, five hundred thousand dollars is an estimate. We probably are lower than that, but we're not too far off. Another perspective I'll give you, the one water plan in which we basically looked at all of water infrastructure in the city, but didn't do specific designs or evaluation of any one asset, that plan cost us about six hundred thousand dollars. So if we're just to dive in into detail on a particular asset, the most complicated water asset that we have, that's why the cost is what it is. So just want to add those, add those factors into the conversation for your understanding.
And if, if I may just add to what Ted had said as well, the team that we selected, we went through competitive bidding and interviewed several consultants before we hired this team to look at the structural analysis and give us the seismic report. And so it's a continuation of what the needs are for the city.
That, that's a great point, Antonas. Thank you. So to Antonas' point, we've already gone through the competitive bid process. And we lucked this out of what, I think it was three proposals.
Correct. Four or five, we went through, interviewed a lot of big firms. So we get the right team based on what we need to accomplish.
And I, I know we, we got discussed this particular project.
Wow, but yes.
And, and he had indicated that this is going to be challenging given the fact it's residence opposed to the reservoir.
Correct.
It's along the lines of what the, the proposal was explaining. Is there, and we talked about the fact is, is this reservoir being, are there any other alternatives to, to Is if this reservoir be up, is there any other alternatives to to?
The way the city was designed, the way the slope or the high elevation is, unfortunately, we don't have the opportunity. To put a fifteen million gallon reservoir on top of a hill. And have pumped water at night when it's cheaper and then gravity field it during the day. It is a pump station that provides system, but the the issue a lot of times happens when it's summertime, for example. As water operations, when it's summer, that's the most time when it's likely to have power outage. Brownout because everyone is running their A Cs. So for us, as as a water purveyor, we wanna make sure we have ample water in our system. Should there be an issue, should there be to serve the residents as we were required to? So although it's a small piece of intricate piece of pumping water to a different zone. It is very critical to have that. So without it, imagine you'd be at the mercy of pumps. And if you have a pipeline that breaks, you don't have that storage. So for example, we have that two million gallon. If anything happens within the city, we know that we conserve that with the residents either conserve to make sure.
And two million gallons is not a big.
It's not, it's not. In summer, the demand in that zone gets to about a million. So, yeah.
I I just wondered, uh, because. As you pointed out, Commissioner, is there some alternatives or something that could be done?
And those are things that will be looked into. What's the alternative, right? That's always something that you have to look at. Do the research and then come up with it.
So Ted, can you confirm that the P D R report will include alternative? From renovating the reservoir or is it just gonna focus on the reservoir?
Yes, so the the P D R scope is, you know, but it's one of the main purposes of doing a P D R is to look at the. Um, the cost effective alternatives at the site. Like Antenna said, you know, it's not like we have a other site options. This is really the only location. And let's keep in mind that our transmission infrastructure that gets water to the site is already built and operating. Um, so there's a lot of factors to consider and and the P D R will help us um. With that effort, Michael had mentioned earlier, you know, one thing to look at is, does it make sense to rebuild a pre-stressed? Um, cylindrical um pre-stressed tendon cylindrical tank on the site. Like we have done with the with the existing reservoir. And you know, one of the advantages of that design is that it's a very restrained space and it's a hillside. Uh, so you're really, your footprint's limited. So that's what the P D R will take a look at um is if that's our best option. Does that help?
Yeah, I think so. As long as it really gets to what you were talking about, Amari, is if the scope of work in the P D R report. Talks about what other alternatives, if we were, if the reservoir was to be eliminated altogether.
Right.
Is there another solution? If there is, we should, it should be, it should be involved. If there's not, and they rule it, these experts, you know.
Right.
Are saying, no, no, we need that. Let's, then we go with it, right? Um, I think that'll come down uh largely to how that how that request to scope to the consultant. And just from what, you know, just like from what I saw in this presentation, I didn't see that. Um, you know, from this presentation, I basically saw that like this is about replacing that thing in that same location. And how are we gonna do that? And so like if if we're looking for a P D R that's going to address that, I'm sure you'll get something great that'll do it. It's just that that's, we're only looking at that one thing. And so, I mean, uh, I think that um so long as that's thoroughly defined and communicated to. The uh A K A K D consulting, it sounds like, then um, you know.
You know, Commissioner Ferguson, we we can certainly ask that of the consultant, but you know, I think Antenna made the point that we don't have the luxury of. Pumping groundwater from within the city. All of our groundwater. Uh, is sourced from outside the city and even the surface water that we sometimes purchases outside the city. So we really do need in-city storage. So we are a, you know, we are a reservoir based. Um, water system, whether we like it or not. Um, and so there are some aspects of that that are. Um, sort of givens in this evaluation, but we can certainly talk to the consultant about. You know, we wanna, it's, it sounds like what you're saying is like, let's think a little bit outside the box a little bit and see if we have to take certain routes, but. Um, there's, we've, we've got a good deal of confidence that we'll probably wind up um with a reservoir on the site again, if that help, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think all we're saying is we understand that. Our forefathers came up with this great idea back in the past. The question is, is do we need this reservoir of this size? We're already, I think you were saying, we're going through a million gallon day, probably in that section. We've got two million, so having that reservoir is only a two-day. Or potentially, you know, so do we need that? Do we only need a million in there since we're constantly filling it up? Maybe we can reduce the cost. Dramatically, maybe we only need five hundred. I don't know. It's like, yeah.
And and those.
Yeah, maybe, maybe there's, maybe there's a trunk line that can have a lot, uh, we could increase a trunk line capacity. Maybe we can increase pumping. Like a, you know, like maybe like new pumping technology might allow for, you know.
And and those are, and. Absolutely, Commissioner Ferguson, and these are the things we're gonna ask of. Because uh from from experience, when we built Garfield Reservoir, we did a similar run. The capacities in the city, the state wants you to have quick response or emergency storage. As you, you know, so to speak, because. We pump water three miles from San Gabriel, that's our main source. If there is an earthquake and those trunks or those lines are severed. Whatever we have in the city is our only storage to buy us that time. Until you do something, and this is portable water. So from the regulatory standpoint, it's not just the cost they care of is, do you have adequate water storage? Within your system.
Yeah.
To address, and the longer that period is, it's the most preferred. So at Garfield, for example, was a six point two five million gallon. During the P D R, they looked into every option and we maximize, can we do this? We designed a six point five with a split in the middle, so that if one goes out, you have a redundancy. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. But they would look into it. We're gonna ask them to look into all these options so that whatever is built now. It's, at the end of the day, it's water reliability to the resident.
Well, hopefully you haven't told them that you're asking five hundred thousand, so.
It's, a- again, you know.
Hopefully, they're they're not done in one month, because if you.
You know, times change, but it it these are the homeworks you have to do and look at all.
No, I get it, I get it.
To 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 come up with, because once you start the design and you go in the wrong way, then you can't go back to corrected at that time. You spend the money, you waste it. Yeah. Absolutely.
The scope.
Absolutely. Oh, definitely.
That would be great. So I think we're, shall we? Shall I make a motion for us to proceed on?
Yes, if some, if somebody would like to make the motion to rec- for the recommendation to proceed with the um.
And I'll make the recommendation and motion to uh proceed with the P D R report. Yes, subject to alternatives, you know, as we've discussed uh tonight, uh, we would like to expand the scope. Uh, according for what we've discussed.
Absolutely, we'll mention that at the episode.
But it might be more money well then. Well, I think, I think you're bringing up some great points that, you know, why not we, uh, you know, see, right?
Okay, perfect. So. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Trevino. I'm gonna do a quick roll call for the voice votes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay. And anybody abstaining? None. Okay, perfect. So motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, then moving on to item number three here is approval of the minutes from our January tenth meeting.
Second.
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna do a quick roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed, none, and abstained? None. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
And we have decided that, yes, we will move forward with the election of our commission chair and vice chair.
Okay.
Like a, make a motion.
Yes.
For um chairman. Stand by.
Ferguson?
For Vice Chairman Ryan Jones to be chairman.
Okay. Vice Chair Ryan Jones, do you accept the nomination?
Uh, thank you, I I do not. I don't know. I I appreciate that, but I I had a good, good run as the de facto. As a de facto chair, but I would prefer to to step away from that. I I appreciate that.
Not a problem. I'd like to make a new motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion for Amari Ferguson to be the chair, please.
I will second.
Okay. Commissioner Ferguson, do you accept the nomination?
Accept the nomination.
Perfect. Okay, so.
Now that I have these bus tire marks on my.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, none, and abstain?
Would we be a vice chair?
Yes, that's coming up. We have our vice chair nominations.
I'd like to make a motion for Vice Chairman for uh Charles Trevino, please.
Uh, Commissioner Trevino, do you accept the nomination?
Perfect.
Okay, do we have a second?
You can get a second.
Okay, perfect. So gonna do a quick roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all ayes. All opposed, none, and all abstain, none. Thank you. So just to recap, uh. Our new chair that will be starting for our May commission meeting. Um, will be Commissioner Ferguson. And uh also, starting in May, we have a new vice chair, Commissioner Trevino. Thank you.
All right, so then we move on to the communication sections of our meeting. We have um city council liaison communications.
Hi, Mayor.
Hello, um, I just wanted to add that there's another pumping station um underneath um Indiana Avenue. Um, that serves the Bilicky tank. So if that. Pumping station on the uh Glen. Glen Place or um site where the reservoir is. When, if that's ever reconstructed, could always have the other pumping station. Um, on India, underneath the Indiana. Right, antennas. Uh, I think that's functional.
It's a backup pumping station with no storage capability.
Oh.
It is on Indiana between Hawthorne and Monterey Road. But it right next to the Edison substation, so you can't imagine it's it's an underground pit with two pumps in it. And it's not reliable. It's there just in case. And why do we like redundancy? Because if something fails, you don't have the opportunity to wait a couple of days.
But that pumping station is critical too, because it's it's closer to the M W D. Um, you know, where they pump the water.
Correct. That that pumping station, they all take water from the central zone and pump it into the Bilicky zone, so. They're on different Edison grids, so should there be a power outage on one side, then this will kick in.
Right.
If there's two grids out, then we have a generator at uh West Side Reservoir to ensure we're able to provide water to the community. Yeah.
Yeah, I I just wanted to um point it out that um that. West Side Reservoir um serves um more than eighty-five hundred residents. And I'm one of them. And Mr. Um Ferguson is another one of them, so. And my second concern is, well, not a concern, but where are we getting the money? Let's not forget that we have an elected official here, um. Your vice chair, maybe uh we can um get some federal grants.
I I was gonna ask that question. Where are we getting the money, right?
Mayor Zimer and uh and Vice Chair Trevino, it's a great question. Um, so as Michael had mentioned, this this design work is already budgeted in our current. Uh, capital improvement program. Um, and so we are utilizing. Uh, the five hundred thousand dollars, again, the estimated cost from our existing water enterprise fund. So when the uh water rates are established, the rates that everyone pays for their water. There's a component of that that pays for our operational costs, treating the water, paying our staff, delivering the water to your doorstep. And then there's a component that pays for anticipated capital costs. And so this is an anticipated capital cost, so um this five hundred thousand dollars is built into uh the water rates. And and that's how we would fund this amount. Now, the question of how to fund the entire reservoir construction, that is a big question. Um, you know, this is a multi-year project. And so uh, you know, we've had alternatives in the past. We've used uh state revolving. Uh, fund loans. Um, we hope that there's might be some grant funding out there. Uh, so that that is an open question about how to fund the entire project, but we do have funding secured for the preliminary design report.
Thank you.
He's right, state revolving fund and also looking at what metropolitan can provide leveraging. Perhaps pay some of the costs and and sign and stuff like that. And then there's this Prop W, which is another, another avenue, but those things need to connect it. As we move forward in this project, once we do the P D Rs, the design records.
How much money do we have in Measure W?
Well, every year they collect the two hundred and sixty million dollars.
But how much is allocated to South Pasadena?
Well.
So I can, I can offer some insight in that too. And so, yeah, uh, as Vice Chair Trevino said. Um, there is quite a a bit, because this is a um, a property tax based uh revenue stream. And so uh, the city brings in locally, we bring in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, a year uh into our city budget from Measure W. Um, and then there's a regional component, as Vice Chair Trevino just mentioned, that's available for us to basically competitively uh go after. Unfortunately, um, the the West Side Reservoir would not be a Measure W eligible. Um, project. Um, the Measure W eligible projects have to address. Um, stormwater and urban runoff compliance. And unless there's a nexus between um runoff treatment. Um, and like the the West Side Reservoir complex, uh, we can't solely spend Measure W money on portable water. Uh, supply resources. So it is a, it is a something that we could use, say, if we were to um. Address somebody uh runoff at the site, but we wouldn't be able to solely rely on it. To help us build the reservoir itself because it's a potable resource.
And and Ted, um, I think that Upper San Gabriel would would be willing to support uh. Having uh the city apply to the state uh for funds this project. It's an essential project. It's it's sustainability, reliability. And and those are things that the state is definitely looking at. If we at San Gabriel are, wanna partner with our cities in that respect. So uh, there there is a lot of avenues that we can pursue. Once we know exactly where we're going on this project, I need if uh it stays at six billion dollars or. Around there. So, yeah, uh, I think there's, there's ways that that we can help the city of South Pasadena.
That's a fantastic suggestion, um, Vice Chair Trevino, and I I think um we would love to take that avenue. Um, one thing that the P D R will do for us is uh assist us in justifying. Um, that financial need. And so uh, this preliminary design report, um, when when approaching upper district and. Uh, metropolitan um for a funding request, the preliminary design report would identify that. Um, we've done our homework in terms of what the project would cost. And how reliable those numbers are and why we need that funding. So thank you so much for offering that.
With the state's um seventy-three billion budget deficit, how likely would the governor um allocate enough funds? For local communities or or like San Gabriel?
We have Prop eighty-four money, it's already being collected uh by the state. Prop eighty-four money is available, there were capital projects that could be available for capital projects.
Oh.
One of the most important things that you're doing, which is something that that uh. A while back, when the city went after Prop W money, is that we didn't have the design work and the. The preliminary design work in place when they went after this money. But now you have this, and this is why it's so critical.
Right.
On the preliminary design work. So that that's how you're able to market. on the, uh, preliminary design work. So that, that's how you're able to market, looking for, for funds.
Oh, great. Thank you. Nice job.
All right, um, Commissioner Communications. Anyone? All right, and staff communications. Please?
Michael did all the time, I can serve. Just that, we're going after any funding, low interest rates to build, just similar to what we did at Graves. To make sure, you know, we can get it built as cheap as possible. But I just wanted to update the commission that on March the twentieth, we're taking the, uh, we're gonna take to council to seek approval for the City Hall Stormwater Pilot Program. And I wanted to check, uh, to, to thank Commissioner Trevino for your diligence in getting us five hundred thousand dollar match for Metropolitan, uh, to get this project ongoing. So just wanted to praise the commission. And thank you. So I have.
And I think we just.
I believe the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned at seven twenty-six P M. Thank you so much, Vice Chair Ryan Jones. We appreciate everything you've done.
Good idea, Amari, on, uh, getting, you know, putting in a alternative, you know?